Court, here. Councilor Stauffer, here. Councilor Watts, here. Alrighty. And you've got a court.
We are all here.
Oh, wonderful.
John Alita was up there in the screen.
Okay.
Ray Burley is in the back there.
Do you want to introduce yourselves?
I'm Cat Stevens.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm Gary Reitman.
What do you say?
Okay.
And Mike is our...
Lisa. Never with that.
These are great.
I'm Phil Jensen.
Phil Jensen. And do you want to introduce yourself?
Hi, I'm John Alita.
John, and...
Down below is our attorney, Adam Spring.
Oh, Adam.
Hello.
Nice to meet you, Adam.
And Danielle is up there.
Hi, Dan, Danielle.
And Nancy's here with me.
Oh, wonderful. Cool, we'll do it. Autumn, do you want to start here?
Autumn Watson.
Fran Brer. Kathy Stewart. Joyce King.
Valerie Stauffer.
Rick Beasley. Brady Wagner.
Kim Mullinber.
Keith Gittner.
Corey Blake.
Alrighty, thank you. Okay, well, I think the ball's in your court. Thank you for the letter and it's nice to see you.
Keith here. Basically, we have, we have a contract to work on a facilities plan. It is almost ready to be submitted to DEQ. And that brings us to a juncture where do we keep going? Or is there some hope that we can work out an arrangement between the two organizations? Get back to the way, way it was, the way it is? And that's basically what we'd like to know. If we have to proceed, we do know that it will go beyond the five-year termination date. In which case, obviously, we'll have to extend the termination or work out a new procedures.
So, just a quick question. So you say you do have facilities that you're anticipating?
We have, we are working on getting a facilities plan developed.
Okay.
We don't have any. We, you know, so... We have a contract, so now...
I guess that's a start.
Could I add a little detail for that, just so everyone understands? I think the, for, for me, just want to state my goals for the evening, since I know we only have a limited time. One is, as Phil said, we have a study for a new facility being done. That, once we have that, we'll know what our choices are. We still have a long road, of course, ahead to complete a plan like that should, should we need to move forward. The costs are significant, the financing is involved. So it's a, as Phil said, it's a multi-year process. And goes beyond that five-year termination date. And I think for, for me at least, this was sort of our first opportunity to kind of set the stage for where things are at. And hopefully, I mean, my, my, my goal would be that we can agree upon some sort of a process beyond this evening that helps us as both organizations to come up with, you know, recommendations and, you know, a process for how we might extend as needed. And if there's opportunities for negotiation, how we might approach those. So kind of a group to figure out the alternatives that are available to both parties.
I've been outspoken upon it on the board with a little plan day on. I mean, I call it a dream, you know? And it looks like kind of being forced in that direction. But this board member would like to see and dream of the depot bay that we can both work together and continue using your facilities here. That's what I want. I don't always get what I want. But, you know, and there's, you know, something about one evening I wanted to share is nothing in Salishan's district, no. Our demographics are probably 70% retirees, fixed income, or working people. I don't work here, depot bay. So, you know, I mean, it would be a real burden to sleep. That's the way I always talk about it. It would be a real burden on our people. I say let's work on that. I guess I, I want to say that we don't want to slouch. We're all part of the same small community, really. We don't want to slouch. It's going to be very costly for us to build. On, on the other hand, as we understand it, please fill us in if we're wrong. As we understand it, your, the atom, your capacity. And so what does the future look like for you guys? Are you going to have to expand your own, our own treatment plant? And how costly is that going to be? And we, we'd like, again, I think John put it really well. I hope to come out of this meeting with the idea of future meetings and things you can negotiate. If Kent is right and we can remain together, let's do that. If indeed, that really becomes impractical, then we have to face that impractical ability. Did I say that? Okay, that's enough.
I just wanted to point out that if we did not have Glen Eden Service District coming through our pipes, our plant would suffice for the city of Depot Bay until the year 2050. We would be able to handle the city's sewage treatment. So at this point in time, we're looking to you folks. For if you want to remain, what are your plans?
I presume that you, you have room to expand where you are.
Yes.
So, I, it would be a capital project that we could participate in. Perhaps. Well, we could, I mean, there'd be a trade-off on what it would cost us to stay with you and what it would cost us to continue. And I think most of us think, we want to know whether that's a viable option or not, continuing on.
What do you want me to say? Seems a little uncomfortable from your guys' end of things. I've been in meetings with you guys for 12 years at least. You threatened suicide several times. You've had people here who have literally yelled at us and disrespected us. So I'm a little curious as to what you're offering my clients. I mean, it's, it's a little odd to be watching this when I've watched other meetings with you folks that have been very unpleasant. So, I think they're, I think they're fine where they're sitting. But if you folks have something you can offer that they can consider in executive session, we have time to discuss. Who knows? Mr. Baines here, by the way?
No, he's...
No, no, nobody that you're talking about is here.
He's been gone for a while.
Has he gone?
Oh, yeah.
Really gone?
No. He's not on the board anymore.
Oh, really?
Yeah, one, one of the things I would like to say... I would like to say, you know, I'm, I'm probably the newest member. I don't have, I'll call it the history that I think other folks might have had. And while I understand that history and, you know, it's, it's something we all remember or most of you remember, not me. I, I would, I really want to, you know, place ourselves in a more of a partnership discussion orientation than some sort of adversarial kind of relationship, which I know it has been like in the past. I think the request for us to have something to offer is logical. However, I think that for us to know what should be offered or can be offered, it, it still, I think, requires some conversations with, involving both elected bodies, with staff, with experts, so that we can understand if, if we can be mutually beneficial to one another in expanding the current wastewater plant to accommodate future needs. I know that we're all, I mean, I, I believe we're all very open to that topic. But it's, I think we would need to understand more of what the needs are for us to be able to come to some kind of terms. So, you know, I think this is a process and this is the first step towards that.
Well, I'll speak for the council only to the extent that I'll, I'll stay true to the process. I don't think, we don't have a number, obviously. But I think in the future, it'd be nice to hear a proposal of some sort that we can, we can chew on. I mean, whether or not we're interested or not, depends a lot on what the proposal is. And so if the proposal is, you give us the $25 billion instead of building your plant, then we may be interested. But if it's to continue on the way we are, I don't know how that's possible. I mean, it's been a lot of years of dysfunction. And we may have to serve you after the termination date. We know that we will probably have to. But at that point, we just pick a rate, we pick a rate that's, you know, something, something reasonable. We'll figure it out by that point in time. But the bottom line is expressing a desire to work something with us or work out something with us probably takes a proposal. I mean, I know a few folks have gotten together and come up with a number or a facilities plan to help us improve. I mean, I don't know, I don't know what you folks have discussed internally. But to say you want to work with us...
I don't, I don't think that we have enough information about what would be needed to expand the current footprint for us to, you know, have. I think that's part of, I think, our, my lack of knowledge is, you know, what would be needed, you know, in terms of a, a, a facilities, a capital improvement plan that we could, you know, then discuss. I think there's been some, a study several years ago. But I, I, from my understanding, it was quite a while ago and I'm not sure if the information from that is still valid. So, again, I'm just going to, you know, politely kind of, you know, push back a little bit and say, you know, we would need to have some, I would need to have some more concrete information before I could, you know, engage in a proposal, which I'm very willing to do.
Well, let's be honest. The only reason you folks are here is you found out it's going to cost you a lot of money. That's the only reason you're here. So the correspondence I've seen in my files has been nothing but threats, disavowing our perception of the contract, yelling, screaming. I've actually had to walk out of this meeting room occasionally. I mean, I understand what you're saying, but, but there's a lot of water over that dam. And unless I have a number that we can discuss in executive session, your desire to want to get out of the building you're looking at is understandable, but it's not really our problem.
Is it possible that if it takes more than the five years, that you will have to expand anyway?
Want to do a study? Would you pay for that study?
No. Why shouldn't we?
Okay. Yeah, interesting. I don't have anything else to add.
I understand. And it's up to the city council to decide whether or not there's some future in discussing. I already said we would be willing to participate in the expansion of the current facility. But we aren't going to engineer it for you because it's your facility. You've made that clear over a number of years. So...
So I guess you better just go through and plan.
Well, if that's, if that's the consensus of the city council, then we will have to bite that bullet and start going down that road, continuing down that road. So we're at a point right now where we will have a facility plan that we submit to DEQ. Hopefully by the end of the fiscal year. I don't know that for, I'm not positive that that will be the, the case. That's our, our hope. And then we'll see what happens with DEQ. Until they approve anything, or until they approve the plan, we're sort of in a holding spot. And at that point, then we'll have to start acquiring land and get to financing the situation. So...
So yes, for years, last three years, we've paid out approximately 1.6 million for using the plant.
For using the plant?
Yeah. Yeah.
Well, you're, after the four years are up, your rates are probably higher.
Yeah. Why?
Why? Because they'll, they'll charge a rate.
I understand. But it's a big contribution that we make to keep this thing going. Man, you're kind of...
Can I, can I just get some clarification? The, the gentleman who, who is speaking, is this, are you the attorney or are you one of the council?
Oh, yes. He is our attorney.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so I, you know, I came to this meeting tonight thinking there might be options to discuss. It, it's starting to sound as if maybe your minds are already made up. And, you know, I'm, that's disappointing, of course. But I, I had hoped that we'd have more conversation.
Have you read the correspondence? I mean, have you read the correspondence between the parties? Did you do some homework before you showed up at this meeting? He's only been on the board since April. Well, have you shown him the file?
I, I will take responsibility for the correspondence from our side. All right? So if that's like the, the big thing, Pete, and good to talk to you again, I can't see you right now. But I can take responsibility for the correspondence from our side. But you have to understand as well that trying to work out some, some parts of the agreement and then just got hit with a, okay, so we're terminating your, your contract now with really no prior notice, right? No, no explanation of this is why this needs to happen. Very, very little notice that this was even being thought. Right? So I mean, I will take responsibility for the tone of the, of the prior correspondence. But I don't think it's like a good enough reason to say, hey, we're just not willing to, to talk and negotiate it all here. Because certainly right now, everybody understands that, that this council of depot bay is fitting in the position of power, right? It's going to cost Glen Eden Sanitary District a lot of money right now unless they get a new deal and it's on us to apparently come up with some kind of a number. Like there's like a number that Glen Eden pays depot bay and then the agreement continues. I, I guess I don't quite understand what that was in reference to, or if that's what they're asking. But, you know, one of those things we did mention in the correspondence was just that there is planning that's been offered here, that the legislatures, the, the... DEQ would like to see the parties continue to work together and up offered to provide assistance for long-term planning with things like Oregon Solutions, where you can go through and talk about what the future needs might be and, you know, how a, a long-term agreement could benefit both sides. And we would still like to do those things. Those aren't things that are going to cost depot bay money. They're, they're willing to pay for these things to get them done, including long-term planning on both sides. I don't see the harm in that. I understand the emotion of, of correspondence and of the years of difficult relations. And, you know, it's...
Yeah, you don't need to take responsibility for it, Adam. I mean, you're the tailor.
I'm really, I'm going to. I'm going to take responsibility because I wrote it. I mean, the stuff you're referring to right now, I wrote.
No, no, well Dennis, Dennis had written a few themselves. And I, I appreciate you falling on the sword. But really, the, the bottom line is that relationship was probably done long before you started representing them. It was just a matter of time before they finally broke the straw that broke the camel's back. It's not, it's not a matter of, hey, can we throw more money at you? Or, well, maybe it is that, that simple. But our discussions internally pretty much have been, we don't want to go through life having lawyers at every single meeting for every little chainsaw that's purchased, for every little truck that's purchased, for every... They're not co-owners of this plant. And so by them showing up here acting like they are and that they paid 160 million, whatever the heck the number was, 1.6 million, it shows that the attitude really hasn't changed much. This is not an ownership issue. You folks are a customer and you're going to stay a customer. And DEQ may force us to have you stay as a customer, but the number will be whatever we set as a rate. And, and they can't seem to handle that. They seem to have this ownership interest in the, in the plant. And I don't know how we get around that, Adam. It's not, it's not a matter of just the letter or a couple of words or a few bucks. It's a matter of, there's a whole attitude adjustment that has to change here. And it has nothing to do with you, frankly. But thanks for falling on the sword.
Are we to take that as the final answer?
We don't have to say, we don't have to say it's final or not final. But you came to us.
Yeah.
Why, why are you trying to back them into something? You folks show up here every single time with this attitude of, is it now this or is it not? Just if you have something to offer us, make an offer. Write it down on paper, send some correspondence our way, whatever it is. Make an offer and let them decide. I don't want to see you get pushed in the corner again over stuff that's...
I, 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 I'm not going to re-cash old times. We are, it's a different board, it will be a different board next, next...
But you paid 1.6 million dollars, you obviously own part of us.
No, we don't.
Well, that was, that was where he was heading with that.
That's not where he was headed with that.
We paid the bills here.
Oh, do you pay the bills here?
No, we helped you pay the bills.
All right, this is, this is devolving into nothing productive.
Right.
Clearly, the attorney for the council has, is setting the tone. And I came here in good faith for a conversation. I'm the new kid on the block, sure. And I read all the correspondence. Yes, there was some stuff in there that was angry and there's recrimination, there's lots of history. And I had hoped that this would be an opportunity to reset, do a little trust building and maybe make some progress. But so far, clearly, that's maybe not what was in the cards. You know, we came, yes, we asked to meet, we came to your, your place. You know, we, we, I, I came, you know, I came out of respect to try to understand the issues. But that's not what I see as happening. And so, you know, I don't know where to go from here, but it's, it's, it's just a disappointment. Because I really had hoped we'd have a more productive conversation.
And, and basically, we're all open to conversations. That's why we're here also. You know, we thought you had some ideas to give us of how you wanted to go forward, a plan to offer us.
So, so I think that maybe, that maybe where...
We have no plan to keep you, you know, in...
So perhaps there was a misunderstanding. I think maybe you were expecting we would come with an offer. We were expecting to just have kind of a conversation to see where things stood. So I think off the bat, we had different expectations of the meeting. So if, if what you wanted was for us to come with some offer on a piece of paper, that's not what we came prepared to do. We came prepared to have a discussion about what our mutual needs are and, and how we might work together or how we might need to go on our own and what that timeline might look like for us. So, you know, unfortunately, it sounds like we, we, neither, neither party had the understanding of what we were coming here to do this year. Because this, this can't be decided in an hour.
All of our planning has been that we go on forward alone. And so if this means being held, how do you get those train, how do you get that train off those tracks? So it's not, it's not like an offer would, a reasonable offer wouldn't be entertained. But we, we're preparing for the worst. I mean, we've been threatened, like I said in the past, but we, we're preparing for the worst. So if you're saying now that for some reason you think dealing with us is going to save you some amount of money that you're going to, you're facing, they have to pay down the road, what is that? What is going to get us off the track of moving on towards our own? Because we are planning on having you folks off the system, not in four years, but at some point. And at that point, we will do whatever improvements we have to do to our plants. So just think through that we were not in any mood to get to this level. And the fact that you folks are here with no concrete offer at least, it's going to take some thinking or something at least for us to consider. I mean, my summary is that correctly? Yeah, we're, we're ready to head forward with what we said we were going to do. So that's where we're at.
But it is such, you will change your mind if we come up with an adequate offer. I don't want... We don't care what you think.
Exactly. I'm trying to summarize what they think. And I'm being nice about it.
So I, we really need to know whether there, we should consider alternatives to building our own plant and working with you? Or just say it's, it's going to be done in five or seven years and...
I don't want them to give a final answer at the moment. Let's have, let's have something you propose and we can discuss. Well, I don't know. It's like, it's like somebody asking you, will you start dating me again after you broke up with me last week? I don't know. I mean, it's, we, we don't know where this will end unless I see what it is that you folks are proposing. I mean, you know, to ask them right now to say, yes, we will deal with you, we don't know that.
Well, I think, Pete, what from our end is we don't understand depot bay's needs very much as far as it comes to this agreement. So it's tough to make a concrete offer, a number or a proposal because it wasn't like we heard, hey, we need to extend this agreement or you need to agree to pay these capital expenses or we're going to have to go on our own. There wasn't like a conversation like that first. So you say, what, what's the, what, what are you going to propose? It would help to know what it is depot bay needs in a long-term agreement.
Well, here's an example. I'm not, I'm not saying if this is probably an overreach. But let's say you were willing to subsidize depot bay's rate payers for the next five years so that they could pay X amount of dollars less than you folks have paid twice the one you're paying for right now. And then at some point, we set aside an amount. I mean, it's, it's exorbitant, but at least it would be something we could discuss. We could say, hey, they're giving us, they're, they're sweetening the pot. They're giving us a rate reduction, they're going to take on twice as much. But even at that, they still save themselves money. I mean, you know, it's, it's not going to be an arm's length transaction. I think you folks pretty, pretty much have suspected that already. Because they, that train has already left the station in their minds. So if that train's already left the station, it's going to take something to make them have to rethink their direction. And it's got to be pretty, I think it's going to have to be something pretty decent, I would guess. I don't know, I don't know what it would take.
So, so I, I think I need to say something here to Mr. Gittner.
Yeah.
I don't know you, you don't know me. I've been on the board about four years. In that period of time, I've never seen you walk out of a meeting. I've never seen anybody showered at anybody. In that period of time, it's been discussed, there have been ideas discussed. I, I, I certainly apologize to you for things that happened 10 years ago. I can't do that more than that. Wait just two minutes there. Okay, please, yeah. So it sounds to me like what the mayor is saying is if we weren't around, the plant could continue for quite a while. So maybe what we need, we on this board need to think about is a study, and I don't know how much that costs. So right there, and I got, you know, four other board members that may say, shut up, Ray, shut up. But maybe we need to consider a study that we pay for about how to expand the plant to include both of us.
But Phil just said 20 minutes ago, he's not paying for anything that's benefiting us.
I mean, it's not that.
Pretty close to that.
Is that the same as?
Okay, what did you say? You have minutes?
I said that we're short planned in, for the expansion.
So you shouldn't have to do a study.
Well, you want us to design an expansion for your depot bay? Is that what you're...
Phil, no, no, they don't want anything from you folks, frankly.
Well, that's, and that's really what we wanted to know.
You think, you folks think it's my, you folks think this is my opinion. It's not my opinion. I live in another community. My, I flushed my toilet, I know where it goes. This is my client's opinion. And frankly, I'm not so sure this meeting is going to be held. That's, that's how far we've gotten on those tracks. That's, that's how far we've gotten on those tracks. So when I hear we spent 1.6 million dollars or I hear, hey, I'd have to pay for a study or one of you said, hey, this is our plant too, you know, those little key words, I know how that affects them. And so that's all I'm saying is, they're the ones that have to be convinced, not me. And, and I don't know you personally either, but I don't have any animosity towards you folks. But I would be remiss in not relaying things that have happened over the years that affected their attitudes about this. It doesn't affect my attitude about it. I could be in Adam's shoes tomorrow and argue the very opposite thing for, you know, lawyers have a way of being able to disassociate themselves. But, but frankly, it's been really hard on depot bay. It's been hard on the staff, it's been hard on Perry. If you folks remember Perry way back in the day, it's been hard on the, the current staff. It's a lot of work. You folks are a lot of work for them, when in fact, they can just put a meter on in four years and read the meter once a month and send you a bill. And that's, there's nothing wrong with that.
And nevermind. We argued that statement a couple of years ago about being charged on flow. And I'd be more than happy to talk about being charged on flow, but.
You, yeah, I don't want to rehash that for sure. That, that there was a counter offer of that and one was that it would be a rate. Flow would be fine, but it would be a rate. Oh, it was, it was a, you guys were trying to get your percentages down. You, you were at.
We were at 58%.
Well, then the rate, the rate won't even reflect that. That's what I'm saying. The future, the going forward is so much simpler for everybody involved here. And so to get this train off the tracks that they're heading towards, just wanting to be buddies again is enough. I don't think it's enough. I mean, I'm kind of, you know, that's why we met beforehand. There has to be some proposal of some sort that benefits us.
And you have to keep in mind, we have to clear up all the streets of depot bay to accommodate the, the expansion. And it's going to cost a lot of money to do all of that as well. So are we going to work together on something like that?
Are we going to benefit from it?
Do you want?
Pass us on no matter what. Just because we go and build our own plant doesn't mean it's not going to cost you guys something too. So, you know, I know you have, we pull us off, I know you say if you pull us off, you have capacity for 2050, but, you know, you have development going on, you want to, you know, you're growing your, you know, your housing stock. So, I mean, we, we were both, you know, look, people working together can usually save money. But, you know, we're, we're not, we're going to, it's going to cost both agencies money no matter what.
As John said, we did not come prepared with an offer. We need to get together and we'll discuss whether or not we need to do that, want to do that, and do that. I don't know which is the proper choice. I see some people say, don't bother, or get that reflection that don't bother. But we will talk about it. We are not prepared to say, hey, we will be glad to, because we're not sure who we're glad to do. But if you're willing to listen when we say we're glad to, we'll work at it. If, if, if it's foreclosed that you're not, you're, you're too far down the track and we would be in the same boat if six to 10 months from now, then we have to have purchased land and started doing funding and things like that, so.
We're always open to discussion.
Okay.
Always, always.
Mayor Short.
Yes.
I was hoping that you would, on behalf of myself and of the council, but Phil's display, to thank these gentlemen for coming in.
Oh, absolutely.
I found this discussion to be very informative and very informative. And I appreciate everybody's attitude here.
Absolutely, yes.
Thank you.
We appreciated, we appreciate being the letter and we were all excited, you know, hearing what you were coming to us to propose. And so.
We, we had a different idea, so.
Okay, so now we're on the same page.
Well, I hope we are.
We need something somewhat to.
So I have a question to, if, if we're going to develop a proposal, which, you know, I think we're all willing to want to look into. We just want to make sure we, we would like, I would think we would need some access to, to, with your permission, to perhaps talk to staff or to get, we may need some information that can help us to develop that. So just want to be clear that, you know, we're, you're fine with us reaching out and if we have some questions to ask before we present something that we can do that.
Absolutely. We have an open door policy here with you, if you know that. We're always willing to share whatever information you need.
And, and one of the things that I heard, I want to make sure I heard it correctly, was there, and I'm not saying this is the way we go, but there is an, there is a possibility that in, one of the ways we could proceed would be rather than, way we're doing it is simply establish a, a rate. Is that correct? I heard someone say something about just pick a, you know, decide on a rate that you'd be willing to pay and then it simply is a much more straightforward billing process. Is that correct?
That would be wonderful, yes.
Okay, I'm not promising for our board, I'm just trying to understand. I do, and I just do want to say as myself, I understand that we're a customer. You own the infrastructure, you operate everything. I, I, since day one, you know, I've, I've understood that. And I, you know, I, I look at this, you know, we're probably a big customer, but we're still a customer. And I understand that and I, and I, you know, well, as we move forward, you know, that's the mindset I will keep, you know, as we make our plans.
I guess we should probably adjourn, like you guys have a break before you begin your, your council meeting. You guys have been sitting for a long time today, by the way.
Yes. But this was very, very fruitful and, yes, we're looking forward to hearing from you, back from you. Absolutely. We're open to whatever proposals you come up with.
Yeah, and, and I'd like to say to Mr. Getner, I, I appreciate your straightforwardness, I do, I really do. Again, I haven't seen anybody walk out of a meeting, so some of this was still new to me. No, I'm serious. I don't want to offend anybody.
It's been interesting.
Thanks a lot.
No, it's been interesting, guys.
Have a good evening.
Pardon me, sir, I think I missed your name. What was your name?
Ray.
Ray.
Burley, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, have a good night. Oh, they can't see me. Even they can't see me. We will stop this meeting.